The League of Women Voters of Cupertino-Sunnyvale presents City Council Candidate Forum 2007, featuring the six candidates running for Cupertino City Council. And now for tonight's moderator, Elaine Manley.
Welcome to the Cupertino City Council Candidates Forum. This forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Cupertino and Sunnyvale. I'm Elaine Manley from the League, and I'll be the moderator this evening. The League of Women Voters is a trusted, nonpartisan political organization. The members do the hands-on work to safeguard democracy. While we never endorse nor oppose a candidate, we are directly involved in shaping the important issues to keep our community strong. As a League member, we have the opportunity to impact local, state, and national issues. If you're interested in learning more about how you can make a similar impact, I would encourage you to pick up some League information right there by the entryway. Our purpose is to encourage informed citizen participation in government, so please remember to vote on Tuesday, November 6th. Tonight, we have six candidates running for two seats on the Cupertino City Council. They are elected to a four-year term. I'd like to introduce the candidates at this time. They are Raj Abiyankar, Barry Chang, Albert Chu, Mark Santoro, Chris Wang, and Gilbert Wong. Great. This evening, the candidates have agreed to a set of ground rules. Briefly, they cannot have a substitute, they must abide by time limits, and we have our timekeeper Sandy Howard down here, and their literature is on the table by the entryway, so please be sure to pick up the literature before you leave tonight. I do want to also mention you can get more information on all of the candidates at Cupertino.org and the website SmartVoter.org. Now, for the candidates, Sandy will be the one that will be letting you know how much time you have left and when your time is up, so we do appreciate you biding by that. The format will be two minutes for opening statements, and then we will ask the questions. You'll have one and a half minutes to answer those questions, and then approximately 8:45 PM, we'll start the closing statements, and those will be two minutes as well. All right? So, let's begin with opening statements, and first, we will hear from Raj Abiyankar.
Well, I thank all the people that voted for me last time. I'm running again. I have learned a lot in the last two years, I've taken the time to listen, I want to ask for your vote for many, primarily the reason that I represent the voice of an independent candidate. I haven't taken any money from anybody that lives outside of Cupertino. I have supporters across our city, and I deeply care about this community. I want to make it a better place. I want to paint a positive vision for the city where we can unite some of the division lines that we've had in the past, and take us forward. So, I ask for your vote, and thank you for being here today, and happy Columbus Day.
Thank you. Barry Chang?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Barry Chang. Thank you for coming and watching this event. I also want to thank League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. I have served two terms on Cupertino School Board. I was first elected in 1995, and was re-elected in 1999 with the highest number of votes. I'm honored to have served Cupertino community, and I'm very proud of my many, many accomplishments. In the past few years, our civic leader has repeatedly approved many condo projects without proper consideration of its negative impact on our school, our traffic, and our neighborhood. Cupertino voters speak loudly last year by defeating major D and E with almost two-thirds of majority vote. It is time for our leader to listen to the voice of the people. And we need to focus on helping our local retail business succeed so we have a revenue source, balance of the revenue sources. When elected, I will focus on, number one, expand the library hours, reduce traffic around the schools, reduce senior membership fee, and provide more service to our seniors, and attract new corporate headquarters, and revitalize our local business. And please vote for me on November 6th. My name appeared at the last, so number six on the ballot. If you need more information, go to my website, www.BarryChang.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Albert Chu?
This is really the first time I'm running. The reason I'm running is I've been in the city about 30 years now, and I see a lot of positive things, but what my real issue or what my vision is, I want to see the city to be at the highest level of safety if that's possible. I'm looking at schools, I'm involved in the school site council as a member. I advise the school in Montevista. I truly want to, as representatives, as part of the community leader, as Cupertino is, because I pride myself as, you know, I pride myself as looking at problems and resolving them. I do like the research part and the investigation part. I go out and, when I see an issue, there's a couple of issues right now that I'm looking into, but I usually just go out and kind of get a feel of it, I want to see it, I want to get a hands-on on the issues, then I would have a clear, objective view of the issue. I pride myself to close on issues, and I pride myself as the highest morality, highest ethical standard that I can achieve. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Santoro?
Thank you. Hi, I'm Mark Santoro. It's been kind of interesting, when I first decided to run, I think a lot of people wasn't sure why I was running, or didn't take me seriously, and as time's gone on, for better or for worse, now a lot of people seem to take me very seriously. And there's all kinds of rumors going out, one of which is that I'm a one-issue candidate. So, my first thought with that was, well, at least I have an issue. My second thought was, some candidates, politicians, don't have issues other than getting elected, or their issues are whatever they think the hot topics are of the day, or some of them unfortunately don't know there's any issues at all. So, I do have an issue, and my issue is the citizens of Cupertino. I believe the citizens of Cupertino need representatives who listen to them. It shouldn't be the council of the government and the people down here, it should be the government working for the people and listening to the people. I believe that's important, and I believe a big aspect out of this transparency in government. I think everyone in Cupertino should know what our government's doing, what it's up to. We have a wonderful town, and we don't have a bad place. I'm not thinking that this is a terrible government we need to completely radically change, but I think it does need to be a little bit more open to the people and what is going on. In line with my thoughts, I have not taken any endorsements, as many of you know, and I have not taken any funds from any special interest groups. So, I'm here to work for the people, and I'm here to listen. If people want to send me comments or questions, I'm happy to listen. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Wang?
All right. Hello, my dear residents. I want to thank you for your support during my first term on Cupertino City Council. I now ask for your continued support in our effort to build an even better city during the next four years. Over the last four years of service on City Council, and now as your mayor, I have shown Cupertino deserve a council that actively participates in and around community, and work with residents to resolve issues that are vital to our town. In this way, I believe I have come to understand the needs and concerns of the people of Cupertino. Even more, Cupertino deserve a council that initiates actions so that our city citizen doesn't just, our city doesn't just solve issues when that arise. We need to actively create opportunities for Cupertino to continue moving forward as a wonderful place for our families, friends, and neighbors. Whether this means planning for better parks, finding ways to provide more resources for public safety, traffic relief, or create opportunities for community interaction and involvement, I pledge to further initiate ways that will allow Cupertino to continue being the great place that it is today. When I took office four years ago, Cupertino entered a period of fiscal deficits and challenges. That time, we had a large deficit. Through our hard work, it is now a $4 million surplus. This November, I hope that you will continue to support my efforts to improve our city. I look forward to an opportunity to represent you again on the City Council so that I can continue my service for you and our wonderful city of Cupertino.
Thank you. Gilbert Wong?
Good evening, friends and neighbors. My name is Gilbert Wong, and I'm a candidate for Cupertino City Council. I had the opportunity four years ago to run for elected office, but I decided to say no. And today, the most important person who's supporting me is my wife Helen, and she gave me the green light to run. That's the most important thing to me. I live in a wonderful community called Cupertino, together with my wife Helen, my two daughters, Allison and Emily. I'm running for City Council because I want to maintain our quality of life and our servant integrity, so that Cupertino can remain a great place to live, work, and raise a family. Three things I want to accomplish is, first, revitalizing our retail centers and stimulating our economic development. Here in Cupertino, we don't have a bookstore, we don't have an office retail store, or we don't even have an electronics store. Being on the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce, I know what is economic development, and we need the sales tax to provide the infrastructure and neighborhood services provided for our city. Second, we need to collaborate with our school district. I served two years on the school site council at West Valley Elementary. I was the immediate past president. Being involved in the school district, you learn intergovernmental relations on how cities and schools can work together. Lastly, I want to support our public safety officers, our sheriffs, and our fire department. I want to work together with our school district to alleviate traffic around our schools. As a proven leader, dedicated community volunteer, and passionate community advocate, I'll bring my life experience on the City Council. I believe that that'll be up and running to be a candidate for a City Council. You can find out more information on my website at GilbertWong.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to go right into the questions, and Barry Chang, you'll be answering first.
Okay.
I'm going to read this, it's a long question, okay? Here we go. Many state agencies, Santa Clara County and Bay Area Quality Management District, all have, in many cases, failed to protect the environment, public health and safety, prevent severe air pollution from stationary and mobile sources. The city administration and Council of Cupertino have had ample opportunities to take a stand on behalf of the residents and raised issues with these government agencies, but chose to remain silent and do nothing. Cupertino City Planning Department asserted no objection to the Hanson Quarry expansion application when asked by the county. Councilman Richard Lowenthal even went to the state mining board hearing on September 13th to help the county to retain its administrative authorities over the objections of many Cupertino residents. What would you do if elected to help raise the visibility of these concerns and issues?
That's a very good question. I will protect the quality of life and the clean environment in Cupertino. I was the only candidate that went to the state board of public hearing on September 13th to voice my concern about the Hanson Quarry, about their financial assurance. You know, according to their own estimate, they had to put up eight-point-some million dollars, but they only put on 1.2. So, there's about $7 million short. So, if they walk away, that means taxpayer has to pay for it. If they say, "I'm done, you know, there's no more profit, we'll walk away," and then to, for the reclamation, the cost is probably will be much more than 8-point-some million dollars, but we only have 1.2 million there in the bank. So, who is going to pay for it? We're going to pay for it. But I think, as an elected official, and as I told a lot of people, we are the public servant, we are serving the resident, and then the most polluted air from the quarry and the Stevens Creek is come down to Cupertino. We are suffering the most. We inhale all those bad air. So, for our City Council to say not doing anything, I don't think that's right. So, I will be actively fighting and protecting the quality of life and the clean environment for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Albert Chu?
Yes.
Can you answer the question, please? Okay.
The same question?
Yeah, yeah. Everybody's going to answer to the same question.
Okay. I can bring out a good example. I was contacted about the quarry issue. I was contacted a couple days ago to meet with the, with the, with the community that live right next to the quarry. One thing I did is, a couple, I guess, a couple of weeks ago, I attended the workshop that was, that was hosted by the Hanson Quarry. I talked to all the management, the engineers there at the time. I just want an understanding of what, what the technical, you know, what the technical issues are that they have, or what, 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 what kind of procedure do they go through as far as releasing all the particles and the contamination, the noise? So, I, that gave me a lot of understanding of what the quarry was all about. After that, I was, like I said, I was contacted by the community. I'm going to meet with them on Friday and really listen to what they have to say. You know, I, I, I don't know all the ins and outs yet, but, you know, once I get there, I'll, I'll, I'll try to match, combine the two inputs, and we're going to, I'm going to try to do, you know, do some right decisions at that point. But I, I want to assure you, you know, this is, this is what I said in the opening statement. I'm kind of hands-on, I want to, I want to go out there, I want to touch it, I want to see, see what's going on. I talked, that's why I want to talk to the, to the management, the CEO, so...
Please stop.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Santoro?
Thank you. I think the quarry is a difficult issue, and I have to admit, I'm not completely up to speed on it yet. And so, I agree with Albert, the first thing to do is actually learn about the issue, and to learn both sides of the issue. I started by approaching the city staff, and I was told that really, it's nothing the city can do, it's out of the city's jurisdiction. On the other hand, I see the dust, I have the dings in the windshield and the paint of my car like all the rest of you, and I do understand it certainly is an issue. And I would hope that at least the city can get someone involved and exert a little pressure to help clean up a few things to make life a little nicer to live around the quarry. I think people aren't, you know, the quarry was always there, and it's not the issue that quarry's there, it's the issue that you've got dust all over the place and you're breathing it, and your, your, your car is pelted constantly. So, I'd like to get up here and promise what I would do about it, but what I will do about it is try to learn more about the issue and understand it, and see to what extent the city can do something about it.
Thank you. Chris Wang?
All right. I am the only incumbent candidate here, so I have admitted that I am fully aware of this Hanson issue. As a matter of fact, I've been watching that, I've been following the, the status on this issue all along. When we first had the public hearing here, right here, a couple months ago, I was the only council member here, and I was the only candidate here, and I wanted to be with residents, I wanted to hear your concern, I wanted to hear about your inputs, what your suggestion. And the state mining meeting that I was going to go, but I have other responsibility in the city, however, I do check with the staff, which we sent one staff from the city to attend the meeting, and the staff brought back the status, the meeting minutes. So, I am fully aware of that. However, I do want to point out one thing, that Hanson is not in city Cupertino jurisdiction. Hanson is under Santa Clara County. It's not something that City Council can make decision on. And so, my solution for that is to annex that side, which I have been working very hard, talking to Hanson, and I hope that one day Cupertino can annex that side so we can have, take full control over it. Thank you.
Thank you. Gilbert Wong?
Thank you. I'm proud to have the endorsement of both the Sierra Club and the League of Conservation Voters. I'm very sensitive to the residents of Cupertino that is deeply impacted by this area. I personally live over by Homestead Road and Foothill Expressway, and I think that I'm also impacted by the truck noise that goes onto the freeway, not too much by the dust, and also there are environmental concerns. As Mayor Wang said, that the quarry is located in the county, and is under the county's jurisdiction, and there is a concern that, that should it go to the state, since the county is not meeting the concerns of the immediate residents. I would like to say thank you to Nixis Ding for bringing this to my attention, and this is an issue that cannot be addressed overnight. I think things that we can address as a city is, number one, when the trucks enter the city, that how can we make sure that the truck noise is limited, make sure that the dust and the rocks that come out of the trucks are not spilling onto our roads. Second, dust, that's something based at the Bay Area Quality Management. And yes, I will go together with the Cupertino residents and go to Bay Area Quality Management and say that we need to do a better job, because the dust is deeply affecting the neighbors in the crested neighborhood. And lastly, the environmental impact in our city. With the expansion of the quarry, I feel very deeply concerned that there should not be an expansion, it should be at status quo, and if there is going to be an expansion, that has to be away from the residents, away from the city of Cupertino.
Thank you. Raj Abiyankar?
Yeah, so from my perspective, enough is enough. I'm an attorney, and I will tell you, I can't sit here and, as a resident and having kids in my, myself, to do nothing. So, people are concerned, I'm very concerned. There are things we can do. The quarry today burns coal every single day. I've taken the liberty of researching the quarry, working with neighbors, working with Hanson to figure out where are the opportunities that we can influence. We can influence the use of natural gas instead of coal. We can make sure that the use of our roads in Cupertino, we get some revenue from their use. As far as the quarry, I'd love to see it gone. There's nothing we can do to make that happen, unfortunately. There is private property rights that they have, they've been in existence for a long time, but what we can't do is just sit and do nothing. And as an attorney, as a person who is a citizen and a parent, I care very much about the quality of our air, and I will make sure, if elected, that this becomes something that I will make sure that the City Council addresses, along with the residents.
Thank you. Okay, so with this next question, we'll start with Albert Chu. The question reads, "I am concerned about the fiscal reserves being so low compared to 10 years ago. In view of that, do you feel the city can afford to pursue the Mary Avenue overcrossing from Cupertino to Sunnyvale?"
I think if you, if you want to pursue situation like the Mary Walkway, I think the Mary Walkway is, is good in the sense that it does give us a opportunity to show that, that, you know, people can, can just, you know, travel from, from spot to spot. It's a safer, it's a safer way to travel. As far as the cost is concerned, I know there's, there's going to be bidding situation going on, coming up. I fully, fully decide, I'll fully go, go and research that based on what the data is. The, the meeting is coming up, I think the bidding is going to come up. I think we need to decide in the, in the, in the funding side of it, you know, what is, what is, what is the city, how much is Cupertino, you know, how much is Cupertino is going to be afford, you know, to pay for this? You know, is the city of Sunnyvale is going to be part of the, the equation? So, all those factors, I think we need to investigate before we decided, you know, to accept that, that bid or not.
Thank you. Mark Santoro?
Thank you. Well, as many of you know, I was the CEO of a small startup company. It started with two of us and grew to a reasonably successful company. When you're running a company, just as if you're running a city, or if you're on the board of a company, fiscal responsibility is a very important issue. As I've been learning about the city and attending some meetings, this is one issue that kind of rung in the back of my head, and it's kind of like motherhood and apple pie, you know? A nice walking path is nice, clean streams are nice, our hillsides are beautiful, the air protection. All of this matters to us, and should matter a lot. But with whatever we do, I think we also need to measure how much does it cost and what's the right thing to do. The first question, I wanted to know what the bridge is, how much is it going to cost, and how many people are going to use it? Clearly, if it's two people a day, the cost is too high. If it's 2,000 people a day, it's a wonderful idea. So, I'm still researching the, the bridge issue because it is a large-ticket item, and I do care a lot about the money that we spend for the citizens of Cupertino. I think we need to be aware of that, and be conscious of it, and be stewards of that, and definitely be fiscally responsible. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Wang?
All right. So, for the quality of life, or energy preservation, or air quality, whatever, all those reasons, I think this bridge is a good, good thing, and it's a good access to, for the people that going through Cupertino to Sunnyvale, or vice versa, are a good thing. However, I'm very disappointed with the cost that keep coming up, keep going up. Many years ago, when we first started, that price tag was less than $10 million, and we have a lot of support, a grant from VTA, from different resources, or even City of Sunnyvale gave a little bit of money for that. As we moving, you know, along, the price tags keep coming up, getting up, getting more and more, and now that the cost on city Cupertino's side is more than $10 million, which I totally, you know, disagree, because, you know, I agree with whoever raised the question, the fiscal responsibility and the reserve. We dump everything into the one project, then we sacrifice everything else. So, we're looking for more grant or more support from VTA, however, also looking overall whether it's worthwhile to spend so much money on one project but sacrifice others, and that's a question mark, and we need to learn that pretty soon in December.
Thank you. Gilbert Wong?
Thank you. This is a very good question, because this is talking about investing in our future. When we first decided to build our new library and our new committee hall, a lot of people said that was very, very expensive, and where are we going to fundraise the money? Here, we have another opportunity to connect the residents of North Cupertino with the residents of South Cupertino. This bridge can be a landmark for people coming into Cupertino. I support a walkable and bikeable community, and this gives us another opportunity to connect the high school students at Homestead High School with retail down south over the Oak Shopping Center. Oak Shopping Center is a gem that we need to save and keep. I did not support housing at the Oak Shopping Center, and where can we get more folks to shop at Oak Shopping Center? By building this beautiful bridge and having the folks from South Sunnyvale and North Cupertino coming over there. As a resident who live on the north side of 280, and there are people who do live on the north side of 280, we don't have an opportunity to have a park. And I can bike with my two daughters, Allison and Emily, eight-years-old and three-years-old, and come to Memorial Park. Emily really loves the ducks in Memorial Park, and this is an opportunity where we can walk or bike to Memorial Park. So, this is called investing in our future. Yes, I will be a steward and watcher of fiscal responsibility, but if we can build the library, we can also build the Mary Avenue Bridge.
Thank you. Raj Abiyankar?
Yeah, so I believe in fiscal responsibility. I would love to see our city become more walkable, particularly around schools and areas such as the parks we have. I'd find that Blackberry Farm, for example, is inaccessible again, and if we had ways for people to access those areas, our tax dollars can benefit much more than isolated projects that might not impact the entire city. So, when I look at the City Councilmen and members, and myself, I represent the interests of the entire city, and I have your trust to make sure that the things that we approve will benefit everybody. And I think there are better places where we can use our money that will encourage walking to school by building walking paths for kids than this particular bridge.
Thank you. Barry Chang?
Thank you. This is a very good question. I'm not only believing in the fiscal responsibility, I also exercised it when I was on school board, eight years. If you check the Cupertino School Board, a school district, we have a very healthy fiscal situation there when I was on the school board, and also improve the performance of our school. So, that's why the property value here is, maintain the value there. And also, I would, I'm the only candidate with master degree in civil engineering and also in construction. I have done heavy construction. When I was in Taiwan, we did the freeway construction, and then we also oversee oversight two major school renovations, Major A and Major C. As you know, the, the voter helped to pass those bond issue. Those two major project finished on time within the budget. I'm the one, I'm the one behind the scene, I'm always watching them very carefully, you know, make sure that they do it within the limit. So, if this project coming up, this bridge project coming up, we have to look at, to see how much can we afford. If it's way over $10 million, it's going to bankrupt our, our, our city. I'm not going to do it. It's just not because it's good, or, you know, depends on how much the benefit we can, we can, we can draw. Because I've spent $10 million, you know, as I spend time talking to seniors, there's a lot of program we can provide for the seniors. For example, July 4th celebration, we can have a bus, the bus senior come- For example, July 4th celebration, we can have a bus, the bus senior come to the downtown area to look at the celebration, let them be part of it. And that is not going to cost that much money. I mean, you're talking about probably $100,000 the most, right? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll start with the next question with Mark Santoro. And the question reads, "Several of the candidates have mentioned improving retail in Cupertino. Specifically, how would you do this?"
I think that one of the things we need to do as a city is to kind of look at where we want to be in 10 years. Rather than look at a spot and say, oh, here's an opportunity to put a store here, or maybe we're going to lose that store, an office building, because we're going to put a condo here and kind of react to one thing after another sort of as it happens and like, oh, maybe we shouldn't have put that there. I think we should stop as a city and think of where we want to be in 10 years. I think that, you know, we discussed ideas like potentially a downtown area that could revitalize part of the city. Well, then the question is, where would you put that? And do the citizens want a downtown area? So I think it would be good to have some planning on the part of the city and get sort of an unbiased citizens group together to look at different areas of the city and see what we can do in individual areas and how we want to plan that. I think if you have a good environment that will work, then it helps. Businessmen won't put a store if they can't make money. We need to have an environment where we know where we're going to kind of nurture that kind of growth and behavior.
Thank you. Chris Wang?
Well, the business in Cupertino helped define and make up our dynamic city and there's very vital to our economic and the fiscal revenues. So I, this is my top priority. And all along, four years ago, when I first got into the office, I was asked question, where's our downtown, where's our downtown? And I was telling people that, you know, downtown really have to be built by the market itself. And now after four years, we kind of see the structure coming out from the east side where all the mall renovation and the marketplace and all that. And then further down, I'm hoping the HP side will eventually join that, will make it more downtown looking. It's, you know, the good thing is that Cupertino has a very good structure. On Stevens Creek, we have a very nice, pretty walkway. So people from west going to east or in the middle of that area can just walk very comfortably and go to enjoy their nightlife. And that doesn't mean that we don't need any retail in the west side. The Oak is still need work on. So we have a small, little downtown or short, a small shopping center to the west, serve the west people, west side of the neighborhood. And that will be, you know, connected with Whole Foods. I think those two sides will be very pretty after that all be done.
Thank you. Gilbert Wong?
Thank you very much. I'm proud to have an endorsement of the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce. And working four years with the chamber on the board of directors, two years on the executive board, and also being a planning commissioner and being on the Economic Development Committee, we need to learn to collaborate, meaning collaborate together with the city, collaborating together with the chamber, and collaborating with the residents. What does the residents want? We're a very well-educated city with a very good school system and we're not providing the stores that we have, but we do have some success stories. Like Mary Wang said, we have the Whole Foods. But what about Falcon Fashion Park Mall, which is now called Cupertino Square? We should be proud that we finally have a movie theater in Cupertino, AMC 16. We should be proud that we have a strike Cupertino and have an entertainment base. But there is more that we can do. I'm very proud that the city, together with the chamber, advocated to hire an economic development manager and her name is Ms. Kelly Klein. And she is a wonderful lady that came from the San Jose Redevelopment Agency. And she has valuable resources that can attract more retail to Cupertino, which can provide more sales tax dollars, can provide more infrastructure and neighborhood services for our city. So we have to work collaboratively together and find out what are the needs and how we can bring these businesses to Cupertino.
Thank you. Raj Abiyanker?
Yeah, so first, I think we should follow the general plan and keep our commercial space. And we shouldn't rezonate. We should make sure that we find ways to foster it. So I believe we should have more businesses that all residents can enjoy. And residents complain to me and I also see the problem where we get businesses that I don't feel welcome in because I don't understand the signs outside. I think as a city council, we need to figure out what kinds of businesses would be great to have in our city. My wife's a pharmacist, she used to work at Long's Drugs. Long's Drugs is gone. We need a pharmacy on that side of the city, we need a bookstore. These are the top 10 things we need. And then go out as a city council and proactively try to talk to the business owners of such chains and such retail outlets and tell them why Cupertino is a great city, why you should be here. And then work with the developers to make that happen. If the businesses can feel welcome in our city and we get the kinds of businesses where all residents can enjoy and feel welcome, I think we can really build a great city for the future.
Thank you. Barry Chang?
Yeah, this is a great question and this is to my best in my profession. I'm in real estate sales and also I saw business opportunity before. You can, Gilbert or Raj can say a lot about, we want a bookstore in here. It's not going to happen because bookstore was here. They cannot, they cannot make it, they closed the door. Okay, look at the one across street right here, Naki Cupertino Cafe, closed three times. Someone told me, change your hand three times. This is crucial to our financial well-being of the city, okay? There's three source of revenue. Number one is property tax. And then number two is retail sales revenue. Number three is business-to-business sales revenue. If we don't have a healthy on three end, we'll be caving to the developer's best interest. That's what happened in the past few years. You look at Villaggio, okay? All the condos sold right across here, but the downstairs, the retail is empty. We got enough empty space in our city already. Look at Cupertino, Metropolitan Cupertino, the same, all the condos sold like a hot cake, but the retail is vacant. So who is going to do it? All this city council, the planning commission did it. Unless we change it, unless they know what they're doing. I'm the one, I know what to do. You have to design it right. If you don't design it right, you cannot make it. Okay, Naki Cupertino has no luck at all. Really, when you walk out, go over there, check it out, you will see the for sale sign. Thank you.
Thank you. Albert Chu?
I'd like to touch on the, the reason why the retail doesn't work that well is, I think we don't provide a environment for the residents to really come out and enjoy at a certain time, like at night or whatever, after work. Why is the citizen don't come out? It's all get down to the basics, you know? Is it a safe environment? I was recommending maybe there should be more patrols on bikes, you know, officers to kind of bring the people out, kids, you know, senior citizen, whatever. They need to come out. And I think the project that's going to make or break is going to be the Apple and the HP complex. You know, if you bring the people out, you know, if you actually people go out and take a walk, where do they go out? They need to, they didn't have a spot to attract them. Like even like an event, you know, like a music store or bookstores, you know? That's how you bring people out. Once you establish a safety environment, they're going to come out. That's how it's going to bring me out. You know, if I can walk and then I can see people, people enjoying the same things, you know, it's going to make it work. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now the next question, we'll start with Chris Wang. And the question reads, "Please address the issue of high-rise, high-growth, and high-density in Cupertino."
We're talking about the measures or just in general?
Just in general.
In general. All right. We have a general plan that sets the height, the density, and the setback. So I think as a community leader, we are the one need to follow what the law sets, what the policy we've set upfront. So I'm not in favor to give any variance or exemptions from the general plan. And right now, I think the way we set are pretty generous and it's good enough for the city like Cupertino. That's pretty much my position on it, right?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I mean, you can get as specific as you want. I don't see any questions that drill into a detail, so that was just the high-level picture.
All right. So to add more, as the projects that we have referendumed last years, I am totally opposing those two. The reason for that is they require some rezoning, they require some exemptions and all that. So based on that, I, you know, it's basically I don't support those two projects at all.
Thank you. Gilbert Wong?
Thank you very much. I believe that we should have a balance and manage growth for our city. I think that the two measures last year on D and E sent a very strong message to our city that we're growing too fast. I think that we didn't do a very good opportunity to explain to our residents that we do have a general plan and it's the constitution of our city. It says that how much we should grow, how tall the building should be, what is the density within our city. I believe that if we're going to grow, it's going to be on our major thoroughfares. And the reason why I say that is that we shouldn't be building in our R1 neighborhoods because those single-family homes are very precious. And I think that we need to keep up those property values because we value living in those single-family neighborhoods. We're definitely not going to build in our hillsides or something that's, and next to our goals, our open space is very important to us. So where are we going to be able to meet those eight bag numbers? Our general plan says it's going to be on our major thoroughfares. By building on our major thoroughfares, that will encourage more transit that can come into our city and have the high critical mass to someday bring a light rail to the city of Cupertino.
Thank you. Raj Abiyanker?
Yeah, so I ran two years ago and this was a major issue and most of you know where I stand on it. My views are largely the same. I think we need to create a city that we could all be proud of. There's neighbors in our city, people that lived here a long time, that are concerned about the construction that seems to exploit our land because it's very close to roads, it doesn't fit the character of a city we can walk and be proud to be part of. Make sure that what we do is we follow that general plan, we avoid building things that are going to be unsightly. I think the planning commission had many opportunities to do a better job and I think residents are frustrated. And I am too. And that view hasn't changed. At the same time, I understand more than I did last time. I was criticized for things, I've learned from that. And I represent the entire city, so I'm going to do what's right for our city to be moving forward in a positive way.
Thank you. Barry Chang?
I think if you look at the past few years, if you have a chance, like me, spend time with the high school student, look at Manavista High School. I spent time with April Scott, Manavista High School. I spent time with Polly Volve in high school, Super Nenan, Cupertino School, Nenan Phil Kwong. And I also talked to this principal at Cupertino High School. Our school really overcrowded, okay? And I also talked to Manavista student, a group of them. Manavista has 2,600 students now. The library space is only 150. The student told me they cannot get into the library, they cannot use the library. So that's one of my platform is expanding library hour. We have right now seven day, if you go out, go check it out, four different schedule. Sometimes people confuse, I just run into before I walk in here, one lady walk up there, wood, closed. If I get elected, two schedule, weekend schedule and weekday schedule, 10 to nine on the weekday and 10 to six on the weekend, period. So everybody know 10 o'clock, our library is open. We have the best library one night using it. We have done too much on the condo, approving the condo project. We got to slow down until find a solution for our school. Otherwise, we'll be getting into a really mess, you know, in the future. And then also find a solution for the traffic congestion. I mean, if you live in Pablo McLaren Road area during the school hour, you're pretty much moving nowhere. I mean, come on. So don't say I'm for controlled growth or I'm for smart growth. Your smart is my stupid, my control is your out of control. I mean, that's, don't use those buzzword. The situation is really bad now, let's try to solve this problem first. Thank you.
Thank you. Albert Chu?
I think high-density housing is like, I was the one that went and talked to the council when we had the Toblerone situation. I was against it because they know that the amount of students they're going to bring in from the families is going to be horrendous. It's like, you know, we need to understand how much the school can absorb. So building more high-density or, you know, housing is not going to do it. It's going to force the school to put more modular housing for the students. We got to give the students a little bit of relief, you know? Students are so cramped together, they just cannot learn that way. Even though we, everybody thinks, you know, that Cupertino school is very high-quality level now, I think, you know, with time, you know, it's going to degrade. You know, we got to look out for the school. That's how Cupertino is on the map, is because of the schools. So we got to understand that. You know, housing is good that we need housing for everybody that wants to stay here, but there has to be a common line drawn.
Thank you. Mark Santoro?
Boy, this is the first question, I don't think I have enough time to answer. It's a great question, you should know where the candidates stand. So I'll just start out by saying, I am not in favor of doing a lot of building in the city, but I'm not against all building. I'm not a zero-building person either. I kind of lean towards the less building, however, because like the rest of you, I think there's been a little bit too much of it lately. And my big problem with it, it hasn't been planned. I've talked to a lot of neighbors and the neighbors aren't against a lot of the projects that have been proposed, they're against aspects of the projects that have been proposed. A couple of things are wrong and they mess up the nature of a neighborhood, they cause traffic patterns through quiet streets, or they add a lot of traffic going around a school or too many students in a school. And that's what I think the neighbors have been upset about, not building per se. So I tend to think we need to slow it down a little bit and look at what we're doing. I don't think we should build just because we think we need to build a lot of stuff. On the other hand, I'm definitely for renewing the city. I think there's a lot of building needs to be done to replace things and make them look better. There's a lot of things that are old and need to be renewed and need to look better and need to be better planned and done. So I guess I'm getting the flag, so I will, enough said there.
Thank you. All right, so this next question, we'll start with Gilbert Wong. And the question reads, "Currently, campaigns are privately financed, which means that those groups and individuals with the most money get to choose who the candidates will be and who is likely to win. Would each of the candidates support impartial public financing of campaigns, pattern after successful systems in other cities and states?"
I think that's a very good question and those were questions that I was asking me during the endorsement process. Regards to public financing, my concern is that if the city was to give money to each of the candidates, I'm not really in favor of that and I'll tell you why. There's so many vital services in our city, okay? That fund of money can be used for libraries. That money can be used for a shuttle for the Manavista High School students or for the Cupertino High School students. That money can be used for senior services. Yes, it's very hard to fundraise for money, but I think that if the community truly believes in you, okay, then the community will come out and contribute to your campaign. You can have all endorsements, you can have all the contributions, but if you can't get your message out across very clearly, concisely, and they can believe in you, then you shouldn't be elected onto city council. So I think that public financing is a good idea, it's not very practical because there's too many services in Cupertino that needs our, that needs the money. Thank you.
Thank you. Raj Abiyanker?
Yeah, so I think it's important that when we have these kinds of elections, that they're decided by the people we serve. And the people we serve are those that are constituents who can vote. And I would love to see neighbors be the only people that can donate and not outside interest. And I'm proud to say I've put in my own money and money from neighbors only in Cupertino and I've turned down many other kinds of sources of funding for my campaign. And I would do it again the same way because we cannot be influenced by outside interests. We have to serve the people. And the highest thing that one can do is do things for people other than themselves and that's why I'm running and I wouldn't have it any other way. And so for that reason, I think if the public financing comes from the city and the neighbors that we serve, then it's okay.
Thank you. Barry Chang?
I'm all for the public funding for the campaign, not only local level, also state and federal level. Because you look at the federal level now, it's totally out of control. Quarterly, you're talking about 30 million raised, every time breaking the history. In the local level, on the money, if you have to get the special interest, get endorsement, you're caving to, tend to, my sell the best interest of the Cupertino to maybe the developer interest. So I don't agree with that, you know, we should have a public funding. This is, I mean, to be honest, this is a no-pay job. So you shouldn't ask the candidate to pay for funding their campaign. You're talking about, the campaign limit is $28,500, okay? So I don't think for this kind of job, it should be public funding, including the higher level. So the candidate can level. So the candidate can work with the resident, find out what they really need, not spending time trying to get endorsement outside of Cupertino and find out, cave into what the outside interest, special interest need. In my opinion, that's not the best way. So it should be public funded. And then so the candidate just focus on campaign, find out what the issue will be the best for the city. And then not have to find out what the best interest for the other guys. So that's my position. Thank you.
Thank you. Albert Chu.
I don't believe in public funding. I do believe that if it's going to be financed privately, we should lower the cap amount. I think you need to present yourself without outside influence, of course. We don't want to, we want to run with our merits, you know. You got to show that you have the ethics and the honesty to run this. You know, this is a public service job, you know. You know, we shouldn't like concern about, you know, how much money each candidate can have to raise to even win the election. You know, the pay is not that great, you know. But why, you know, you ask yourself, why is the city council member running to be reelected? It's not a high-paying job. We run it because our heart is into it, you know. You got to deliver to the city, you know, something you can give. So private funding is fine. I think, you know, you got to run it with your supporters. And, you know, I do believe, you know, we need to lower the cap on the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Santoro.
My answer is no, I'm completely against that. And my apologies to the vote I just lost. I think it's a waste of taxpayers' money. I believe in free enterprise. And I believe that the candidates should have to raise their own money. If we just say we're going to put up $50,000 for everybody that runs, what's to stop 100 people from running just to take money to waste all of your time and make you look at even more signs around the city? By the way, everyone up here has to disclose where they got their money from. And every citizen out there who cares should go look up that information. It's really available. And see where people got their money from. It's interesting. It's insightful. And you should keep an eye on where the thing are. It's part of open government. You should have that information. And this piece of information is available to everyone. Lastly, I'd like to say that if the people have issues with special interest group financing candidates, you outnumber them like 1,000 to 1. You can all get together and make a small contribution to the candidate you believe in. And then those candidates will take notice of the public's contribution perhaps, instead of looking at the few contributions they've got from special interest groups. So you guys outnumber the special interest groups a lot. You have a voice in this. Use it. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Wang.
I think a lot of people know that I take fiscal responsibility very seriously. And I treat every dollar as a treasure. And during my four-year serving on council, I review every dollar we spend. So I totally against that spending public funding for the campaign. And I think when the candidate do the fundraising, that also way to communicate with your community. And people donated or contributed to your campaign is more like putting the faith and a trust in you and ask you to represent them again. So I fully believe this is something you need to work and you need to earn and that's indirectly to be the respect that you earn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So this next question, we will have Raj Abiyanker start. And it says, what do you consider our downtown? And would you suppose the regional moon festival that normally has 7,000 to 10,000 persons attend could be held on a blocked off street at our downtown, giving our malls better exposure?
Okay, so there's two parts of the question. The first part, we have to look at the open areas of our city, our last remaining open areas. And we have the Rose Bowl and there's the old, there's an old HP site which is out for sale. I'd like to create a walkable area in the heart of our city that has the kinds of businesses that we can all enjoy. And that area represents a place for that opportunity. And we have an opportunity to build it without putting in things that the neighbors around that area wouldn't like to see by proactively working with HP and potentially businesses that might occupy that space. I'd like to see something like Santana Row. It'd be great to have something where people can walk, maybe not with such high-end shops, maybe everyday shops. And parking underground. So, you know, you don't have to go through a maze to find your store. The second question is the moon festival. I think the moon festival attracts people from out of the city. I went to the moon festival. I didn't understand what I was reading half of the things because they weren't in English. I'd like to see things that, and events that cater to the residents of Cupertino, if they're going to be publicly supported, even if it's not popular. And every event should be inclusive. And I firmly believe that.
Thank you. Barry Chang.
And that's the main reason I jumped in at the last minute to run for this position. Because we have one great opportunity to develop HP property. If we let it go, the window opportunity will be gone. Okay. We can have a downtown right here. Okay. Because civic center here, library here, and then across street. But the civic center, our civic leader and our planning commission goof, okay, they approved that Taylor Woodrow project, the townhouse stuck in the middle, going nowhere. The bidagio, no retail. Okay. The design has to flow. People want to park their car, do their shopping at once, also including their entertainment, you know, meal, everything. So they don't want to drive one car to one spot and then drive to the other end of this town and then for another stuff. So, but the way we designed it, you know, unfortunately, it's from planning commission here and then our civic center, civic leader here, done it. The retail, the Cypress Hotel, HP and Apple Computer, our two biggest business partner here, keep telling us we don't have enough conference room. And we allow the Cypress Hotel only have, a conference room can host only 250 people. HP and Apple is not going to do any conference here. Too small for them. We cave into the developer's best interest too early. We allow them to build too many condo behind it. We should demand, make sure that whatever is best for Cupertino interest is not best, what the best interest for the developer. Thank you.
Thank you. Albert Chu.
I support having the moon festival in the locations such as HP and Apple. You know, that is the real, you start putting the seeds in the soil type thing. You know, if you have some events, you know, like regular events, you know, that's going to happen. The moon festival was held like almost two blocks from my house. The parking, the traffic was tremendous. I couldn't even get out of my driveway, just to bump into somebody. So I think if you are serious about it, we have to develop that area into the site that people are going to, the event is going to be attracted to. That is the bottom line. If you attract them, the retailer comes and it will work. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Santoro.
First, I'd like to answer the downtown question. Cupertino doesn't have a downtown area. I don't, you're asked where I see it, I don't see it. And the reason is because there isn't one. There never has been one. There's been little pockets of shops, but we really don't have a downtown area. And if you look at cities that have these little quaint historic downtown areas, they always did have them. They just renewed them. So we don't really have that. So, but to clarify something I was saying about a downtown area for people, when I mean a downtown, I mean sort of an outdoor mall, a little area, something like Santana Row or Castro Street, where people can gather and walk around and eat and shop and things like that. We don't have a quaint little old downtown area to renew. So we can put it wherever we want if we so choose. So in terms of blocking off the downtown area for the moon festival, I really am not sure that I see that as an option. It's an interesting idea to bring in some business. The park is pretty. It was a wonderful location. I think it's a wonderful festival. I like the diversity in Cupertino. It's one of the reasons I live here. And so I think it's wonderful to have these things. And I think we need to encourage them to continue to have them. But in terms of a downtown area, I'm not sure where we put it. The park was a pretty location for it.
Thank you. Chris Wang.
Well, I think I covered the downtown pretty well earlier. I think downtown really something that's market-driven. However, I'm very hope to see that happens, what we are kind of like, having this little structure, start building it. It's by the Cupertino Square and across the street, the marketplace. And also hopefully, we can expand to even more east side, the HP side, so that it will make really a walkability downtown as my fears over there. We have theater, we have the bowling, we have a lot of new restaurants and existing restaurants. So I think that will be something I would like to see. Back to here, west side again, I wanted to reemphasize that Oaks needs to be renovated and hope that Oaks can build a small shopping center so to meet the west side residents' need. Well, I don't know who asked this question, but I think putting the moon festival into the mall or those area is very creative. However, those are the private properties. It's not the city, it's nothing we can control. So, you know, I just want to say that even anyone here get elected, I have no power to tell the property owners, you put the moon festival over there. So that's not something we can control. But I think as a creative idea, maybe, you know, we can suggest the owner, but that's really up to them. And the cost might be very high. We can look into it. Thanks.
Thank you. Gilbert Wong.
Thank you. Being on the planning commission for five years, we have always been talking about how can we create a downtown? We're not a Los Gatos. We're not a Mountain View. We're Cupertino. And the closest thing that we have of a city center is really the crossroads. There was talk about reducing the traffic lane on Stevens Creek Boulevard. And the chamber and the community really opposed that because we want to protect our retail along Stevens Creek Boulevard. We want to protect Target. We want to protect Mervyn's. But there are ways to revitalize it. And those ways on that particular area was not to build housing. Because there was suggestion of having 20-foot sidewalks, high-rise buildings with retail on the bottom and housing on the top, or housing in the rear, which will severely impact the R1 single-family residential neighborhood. So where can we have these walkable downtown areas? We can have a couple of them. And one of them would be Cupertino Square slash the HP Valco Land. On Valco Parkway, we have 19 acres, virgin land here in Cupertino. There's an opportunity to build a lifestyle center. Maybe that's another opportunity to build a conference center that Mr. Chang was talking about. Maybe that's an opportunity to bring in a bookstore, where a bookstore can come in. Another opportunity to bring in a home improvement store. We need to have a dream. We need to have a vision. And if we stick to that dream and that vision, it can happen for the residents of Cupertino.
Thank you. All right. Now, our next question, we're going to start with Barry Chang. It says, how do you plan to keep corporations in Cupertino, for example, Apple?
Apple, that's a very interesting question. Remember, the city council was going to approve the housing project across street from Apple until Apple come out and say, if you guys do that, we're out of here. So that's wake them up. Okay. So that's what the situation. Our city civic leader doesn't have a vision. And our civic planning commission doesn't have a vision either. Gilbert can talk a lot, but there's none. Until they say, you know, if you guys do it, because they say, the civic leader keep telling Apple, we want to walk to work. But the Apple told us, no, we don't want to walk to work. We want to walk to lunch. Okay? Right? So come on, wake up. Don't just talk. Talk is cheap. You got to have, to do it. Okay. So we have to, in our, if I get elected, one of the platforms is recruit more high-tech or more corporate headquarters come to our Cupertino. Because we get, also if there's sales tax, a sales office in here, we get their sales taxes by just have them here. And that it doesn't increase much of the burden to our traffic on our street. It doesn't include in burden, burden on our school. In the meantime, the retail property, we will also get the property tax. And we'll also get the resale, retail sales revenue. It's a double win-win situation. Why not focus on that? And then why keep focusing on approving more condo and get all the citizens upset with the referendum? And it's not good for the city. It's not healthy. Thank you.
Thank you. Albert Chu.
I think we need, with Apple's situation, we need to present to them that, hey, Cupertino is probably the best space for your family to live, especially the education level and so forth. So that's the good selling point. Other than that, you know, we need, I mean, you know, we were going, talking about how are we going to develop the areas between HP and Apple. That was like, you know, I still haven't seen us going and asking them to come out and tell us what they really want. What is their top priorities? We got to address those, right? You know, maybe even tax breaks. I don't, you know, something. You know, we got to have to, we have to compromise. We have to listen to them. And from what you heard from them, you know, that's going to solve a lot of your questions, you know. Don't try to, don't try to give them something that they didn't even ask for or they don't even want. So that's my thing. You know, we need to get with them. And we need to come up with a plan, you know, a doable plan.
Thank you. Mark Santoro.
Well, I used to actually work for Apple back in the kind of early to mid 80s. It was a wonderful company then. It was a wonderful place to work. And I have to confess, I'm still somewhat of an Apple bigot. I like my Mac. I think there's a simple answer. If you'd like to know what Steve Jobs wants, we could just ask Steve Jobs. I'm sure he's willing to tell us or send us an email or somebody else at Apple would probably answer the question. So a good place to start, I would say, is with our major corporations, why don't we ask them what's important to them in the city and see what they have to say?
Thank you. Chris Wang.
Well, first, I want to say that I'm very happy to hear Apple made the decision, stay in Cupertino as its headquarter a couple of years ago. I think that means a lot. Everybody knows that Apple generate the most sales tax for our city. And they have been very cooperative with the city. And they contribute a lot to the community. Couple of weeks ago, they announced to donate eight computers to our senior center. All in all, they have done a lot of the fundraising, the nonprofit events, supporting all those. So I'm very happy to see that they turned all those empty land into their offices instead of that potentially being housing. Of course, it's going to take time to build that campus. My personal hope is that if they have the, they can build the same like Google building in Mountain View to provide the entire city wireless for the city Cupertino as part of that, the cooperation and cooperation. And then we also, in return, I want to urge my citizen Cupertino residents that they are our daytime residents. They generate sales tax here. They shop here, they eat here. So they're part of us too. So I think we have a very bright future working with Apple.
Thank you. Gilbert Wong.
Thank you very much. We're very lucky to have Apple Computer here. Their headquarters is here, meaning that the sales tax dollars will come to Cupertino. We also have other large businesses like Hewlett-Packard and Portal that also comes here. I think my goal as a city council member is try to attract headquarters, sales headquarters for Cupertino so we can provide sales tax dollars, provide infrastructure and neighborhood services for our city. I'm very glad that Steve Jobs chose Cupertino to have our second campus here. On the planning commission, I've always advocated the North Valco area to remain industrial in the general plan, never advocated for housing. Once we lose any industrial area to housing, we lose that forever. And I was very strongly in the general plan not to have any housing be replaced by industrial area. It's very important to me. Also, we should also take into consideration the small businesses here in Cupertino. There are many small home and pop businesses here, including like Pebbles, like Vardy Jewries, like Dry Clean Pro, like the Learning Center. And we as Cupertino residents need to support our local businesses here. And being on the chamber, we have always advocated on how we can keep small local businesses in here. So we have to have a balance of how can we bring large businesses with sales headquarters here and also keep the small mom and pop businesses in here too.
Thank you. Raj Abiyanker.
Yeah, so I think the biggest opportunity for us to keep companies like Apple is to preserve our commercial real estate and not convert it to different uses. We have an opportunity to do that so we can continue having businesses like Apple and HP. I used to work at HP. I'm an electrical engineer. I'm also a patent attorney. Our city and our region is dictated by innovation. We have an opportunity to create the next Apple, the next HP, by taking all the smart residents that we have and empowering them with a place to start businesses. I think we should create an entrepreneurship center in Cupertino, encouraging people in our own city to start businesses here and also commute less to work. One of the topics I haven't heard much from yet is the environment. And I'm very concerned about it. and I'm very concerned about it. We have to create a sustainable future for our children. And we have an opportunity to do that by building new generations of businesses right in our own city.
Thank you. All right, our next question, we will start with Albert Chu. And the question is, "What do you propose doing to reduce our city's greenhouse gas emissions? How high a priority is addressing global warming for the city?"
My, my thinking is kind of a little bit radical. I think when people talking about, you know, getting, getting these special vehicle like the hybrids and so forth and so on. And then they talk about, you know, let's go all electric cars and so forth. That's not really the solution. The solution is, you know, you're, you're just trading one, one, you know, you're trading one, one, one bad thing for another. You know, to do this right, you've got to, you've got to be, you've got to go and convert your available space into power generation, maybe even nuclear, maybe some kind of fuel cell operation. That's the only way you can convert to get out of this fossil fuel situation, this greenhouse effect and so forth. So, to do it right, you've got, you know, we just don't want to ask people just go, go get a hybrid car or get an electric car, you know? That's going to, that's not going to work. You're trading one evil for another. You know, how, what creates electricity? You know, fossil fuel. So you're just, you're just going around in circles. You've got to go, go with the real, real clean sources. The clean sources is probably going to be nuclear. So, I know a lot of people, you know, kind of hesitant to think about it, but that is the answer.
Thank you. Mark Santoro?
Well, I'm still a nerd at heart. Even though I do read business information, I read a lot of my nerd magazines. And for any of you who happen to get IEEE Spectrum, there's an interesting article this month, one of our own, David Kaneda is in there. He's got a several-page spread on developing, unfortunately, it's in San Jose, not here, but a green building. And so David's on the, on the planning commission if any was interested in that. I think there's a lot of little things that we can do and they kind of all add up. For example, I think we should look at investigate using LED lighting in our cities. They're becoming far more efficient. And if we start planning now and upgrading our system, they last a lot longer, they reduce maintenance costs and they can reduce energy cost. A really big-ticket item is traffic. And so I think we need to start looking at traffic congestion. We certainly are not helping the environment when everybody's sitting in gridlock for 30 minutes around schools in the morning, burning fuel going nowhere. So I think we need to address the traffic. It'd be nice to figure out how to relieve the congestion around the schools. Maybe we can get more people walking or taking their bikes or encourage the people in the neighborhood to, to kind of help with the thing. Other than just saying it's the city's problem or the city pointing and saying it's the school's problem, it's all our problems. And I think we can work out some solutions to help all of us with that regard and having a little cleaner air there would go a long way. So I think there's just a lot of things the city can do to do that, to help with that problem. They can certainly encourage homeowners to be more responsible. We can either help with...
Thank you for your patience on that one. All right, Chris Wang, please.
All right, so whoever asked that question that you got the key word is global warming, global is worldwide, it's not the local issue. But on the other hand, it's the responsibility of every single person live on this earth. We all need to put an effort in. We have heard a lot of the issue, problems, but where's the solution? And that's what the community leader that we're here, we're looking at and what, from the, from the small to large, how we can help and reduce the damage that continues coming. And so, as a city council, we already started this year the discount on the solar system for individual housing. And also, the city technically already changed all the lighting, the LED. And also, we have changed our car to hybrid car for our city cars. And furthermore, I think I would like to make greener businesses, which is that we city can fund some programs that will help businesses utilize more energy-saving solutions. Such policy will allow business to save money, reduce maintenance and protect environment. At the same time, we create a win-win situation for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Gilbert Wong?
Thank you. Again, I'm proud to have the support of both the Sierra Club and the League of Conservation voters. Global warming is something very important to me. Number one, water conservation. This is very important here in Santa Clara County. We have not enough water in the county. We're very lucky to have a friend at the Santa Clara Valley Water District, Patrick Quoc. And let's work with the Santa Clara Valley Water District and see that as we are building in our city, will that build up, taking into consideration our water. And my concern is that we're building too much at the expense of our environment. Number two, the carbon footprint. We must reduce the carbon footprint here. And it's a global thing that we have to work with our other cities and with state, federal. Again, as your council member, I want to develop public policy issues on how we can build more greener buildings. Let's go with the LEED certification. If the city of San Jose can do it, a smaller city like Cupertino can also do it too. Like Mark Santoro mentioned, our own planning commissioner, David Canada, was able to build an office building that was under a LEED certification. Now, he went through hoops and jumps to get through the planning and building department, but it can be done. And I think that there was a lost opportunity to get our community building and our library LEED certified as well too.
Thank you. Raj Abhiyanker?
Yes, your question was what I think about greenhouse gases and global warming. I think it's the biggest issue of all. And the melting of our poles is going to affect life on this planet. Now, what can we do at a local level to address the issue? At a local level, we have to understand what are the biggest contributors to greenhouse gases. And two days ago, I was reading TechCrunch, which is a blog on the internet. One of the biggest contributors to global warming is our cement factories. And here, we have a cement factory next to our city spewing out coal every single day onto our residents and we're doing nothing. So when I sit here and tell you, "I care, I know what the issue is here and we have to address the issue at its heart." Sustainability and building a future for all of us is important. So what can we do at a local level? We should have green roofs, make sure that solar rays are reflected properly off of rooftops. We should make sure we have, we switch from incandescent lighting to fluorescent lighting in city projects. We should become a model city for the environment and our future. And I am committed to doing that.
Thank you. Barry Chang?
There's a couple way we can do. And now, we cannot say because we're a small city, then we don't do it. For example, reduce the fee for the green building permit because our city is the highest. So if someone want to put a material or apply for the green building permit, we should reduce the fee. There's a lot of improvement on that. Even the most recent one is the solar roofing. So you put your roof, you get a solar heating. So there's a lot of things to do. And then, you know, order the city to buy the hybrid car. It's one of the, one of the item we can do. And then reduce fee for the green building. And also, reduce the traffic jam in our neighborhood. And this is what, if you look at city of Cupertino, the number one besides the cement plant right next door, it's probably traffic congestion. I mean, look at all the, everybody sitting on, pretty much like parking down for 30, 40 minutes and produce those film. So unless we do something and then we are slow down on our approval of the condo project, we're not going to, we're not going to achieve that. So that's, that's, this is actually a very alarming issue unless we take care, everybody take care, do their share. This global warming, it will be really affecting the whole entire world. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next question, we'll start with Mark Santoro. And the question is, "Have you accepted donations of $1,000 or more from developers with interest in Cupertino? And if so, how can you serve Cupertino residents unbiasedly?"
I have not accepted donations of $1,000 and more from any developers or any special interest groups. I've only accepted donations from citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Wang?
Well, I receive a lot of donation, contributions, but not as aware of they're from direct from developer. I'm not the developer in favor persons, everybody knows that. And my voting record in the last four years has shown that I have no bias. And I'm a big advocate for our citizens, for, you know, our community.
Thank you. Gilbert Wong?
I also have not received any donations from developers as well too. I think that it's really important that if we were to receive it, there will be a conflict of interest. Even though we have a 460 form and the 460 form does allow us legally to take contributions from maybe developers or businesses, there's nothing wrong by taking that funds. But I think that because there is a concern regarding growth, regarding high-density housing in Cupertino, that it will give a wrong procession by taking funds from them. I think that if, since I'm not supporting public funding, that there will be groups of people or candidates who have a difficult time in fundraising money and there is an opportunity to take money from them. I think that instead of giving it to candidates, I think that for responsible developers is to give back to the community. Give it to Cupertino Community Service for affordable housing. Give it back to our festivals to support the Fall Festival. Give it to the Rotary, which is a service organizations. So there's other ways that these businesses can give back to the community.
Thank you. Raj Abhiyanker?
I haven't even taken 50 cents from anybody other than residents. And I think it's a mistake to try to get businesses that are actually adverse, like Hanson, to our health and have them donate a few dollars here and there to local causes so that they can influence our local politics. I don't think that we should have any connection to it or should we endorse or encourage it at the same time? I have, I don't believe that people need to be giving $1,000 donations to anybody. I think $50 donation is as good as $500 donation or $1,000. So the more residents that feel strongly about an issue, the more that's who I'll listen to. If I'm elected, I won't make a decision before walking into a council chamber. And I will assure you that.
Thank you. Barry Chang?
I have filed my report already, so my donation is public, belong to the public. You can check it out. I don't recall I receive any donation from developer working in city of Cupertino over $1,000. As I said, if we do it right, we don't have to cave into developers' interest, okay? There's three items we need to do. One is the retail business. We got to have a retail business revenue from retail. Our retail has to succeed. Number two is business-to-business. I disagree with Albert Chu say, if Apple wanted, we give them the tax break. I don't believe in that. If we are healthy, they like to do business here, they want to stay here, they stay here. We're not healthy and our fiscal situation, then you tend to cave into the developer needs. Okay, so there's three things of our city's healthy fiscal condition is property tax, revenue, retail sales revenue, and there's business-to-business sales revenue. So if we can develop a retail, successful retail, then we'll be successful. Then we don't have to cave in to the developer. We can demand what we need, what, we can look at what the best interest for our city, not what the best interest for the developer. So that's my position. Thank you.
Thank you. Barry Chang? Excuse me. Albert Chu?
I have not received any money from any, you know, developers and so forth and so on. My donation actually comes from my, mostly from my family and my friends. They are friends from the outside of this Cupertino area that they believe in me. That's why they contributed. So mine is just all private funding.
Thank you. All right, this next question, we'll start with Chris Wang. This one is, I'll give you the question, then I'll give you some additional data the way it was written. "How will you work to reduce or eliminate the large-scale tree removal that is planned at Blackberry Farm?" And then it says, "Note, 185 trees are individually listed for in the city plan, 22 to be removed for the bike road, 23 at Blackberry Farm, and 142 about Stevens Creek." Do you need me to repeat that?
Well, general question is, "How do you reduce the number of the trees to be removed from Blackberry Farm?"
You got it.
Okay. Those numbers, you know, it's not a critical here, however, it is. I agree, there's a lot of trees that's being identified will be removed pretty soon. We may be able to save some because we're in the process of revisit. If we don't have to move the creek to the other side and keep it the same way, we will keep those trees. That's your answer.
Thank you. Gilbert Wong?
It's very similar to Mayor Wang's, is that we have a very valuable asset in Cupertino and that is Blackberry Farm. And the community struggled for many years that should we build the Stevens Creek corridor or not? And that is a valuable asset within Cupertino, that we have an opportunity to build a multi-purpose trail in Cupertino where young folks or old folks can actually walk on the trail and enjoy the natural scenery of Cupertino. In regards to removal of trees, I also agree that we should not change the path of the creek. That creek has already been there for many, many years. And I think that for just turning the creek and taking out a couple of large oak trees that has been there for many, many years. When city staff suggested that we can always plant acorns and the trees will come back again, my concern is that on the planning commission, we asked applicants, "When you take down a large oak tree, okay, then you have to replace it with a 48-inch box oak tree." If you're going to take any trees down in Blackberry Farm, I also will require the city to replace each of them with a 48-inch box tree. So there is a double standard between the city and our residents and businesses. And I think that there's an equity issue. So again, it's very important to salvage, to save those trees. And I very strongly believe in a, in a strong environment.
Thank you. Raj Abhiyanker?
Yeah, so I don't believe we should be taking any trees out in general. I think we should be planting more trees. I don't think that there's any reason to. As far as the creek and the rerouting of the creek, you know, truthfully, I'll be very honest with you. I don't, I don't know the whole issue. And I won't ever pretend to know something I have fully not understood. So I'd be willing to listen to both sides and make a decision that works for our city. But ultimately, I do believe we should preserve as many large trees as possible.
Thank you. Barry Chang?
I'm a tree lover. So my neighbor Barry sit here and my wife here knows, I love to plant trees. If you come to my neighborhood, I'm the one plant the acorn and watch them grow, okay? It's give me a joy of accomplishment, okay? That's really a joy. There's no comparison to take down a big oak tree and replace 48-inch box tree. There's no comparison, okay? If I get elected on the Blackberry Farm, I will watch every tree, make sure that, you know, they don't, they don't get removed, okay? I was the only school board member, when I was on the board member when they are doing the Eaton Elementary School renovation. If you know Eaton School, you know there's a big oak tree, California oak, in front of the office. But because of renovation, they have to cut it. And I was the only board member fought and fought to try to keep that big oak tree. But 4 to 1, I lost it, okay? So poor oak tree got cut, okay? I told this, the school district say, "Why don't you move the office a little bit away? I mean, that 200 oak tree is so beautiful, so healthy. And it was there before we were here and then will be there after we gone." For the man can't come in there just because my office has to be here and it has to cut. To me, that's, that's too cruel, too cruel. Be honest with you, and it really hurt my, break my heart. But I keep fighting, fighting and I lost it, sorry.
Thank you. Albert Chu?
I don't, I don't, I don't support any idea of removing tree just because, you know, you don't like the way it looks or, you know, the only reason you remove trees are what, it's just, is a hazard or it's either tangled with the power line or something, you know? That's the only reason, you should even consider cutting any trees down. It brought me, I was, I was over at this scenic drive, I guess. I was, I was asked to, one of the residents to come out and look at what the area, that was fenced off and vandalized and so forth and so on. I got a first-hand look at it. That is a nice area, that picnic area that they have, all fenced in. It's like, there are some trees falling down there. That, those are the trees that we need to be concerned about. Those are the hazard areas, the hazard, that have to remove, remove. The bridge have to be fixed so we can, we can really develop a path through that area. That is, that picnic area would be tremendous, you know? When you, when you get done with it, it's going to attract a lot of, a lot of family, you know, picnic area. That is a gorgeous area. So that's my, that's the one thing I'm interested, that issue that I'm interested in. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Santoro?
First, I'd like to say I also like trees. There are far more trees on my property than when I bought it. And I think everyone should strive as you come to a neighborhood or a city to make it better than it was. make it better than it was when you arrived. With regards to the, to the Stevens Creek area, next to the golf course there, it was one of the things that struck me as a little odd, sort of like the walkway, and it's fairly expensive, and I didn't understand it. So I spent two hours with some people in this, in the community, walking around the Stockelmeier property the other day, looking at that. There's different types of trees. There's an old orchard there, with a lot of citrus in it. There's oak trees, there's sycamores. I, I too question whether or not it's correct, either fiscally or for the environment, to move the creek, and would like to see more information on that before I would support that. Sometimes you may have to do something with trees, but I, I'm, I'm not convinced. I, I think that there, there can be a lot more done there. And even from the point of view of preserving that property by the historical society, I think perhaps a small parking area there, or something where people could actually go and enjoy and see that area, and maybe use that as a picnic area, might be some other advantage with that area as well. So I, I think it should be studied a little bit more, and I, I don't think we need to lose as many trees that are being planned in that area, certainly. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our next question, we'll start with Gilbert Wong. The question is, "What is happening with the Cupertino Square renovation? It's, it is sparsely populated by retailers. We've been waiting patiently for 10 years to see the mall return to its former vitality."
Thank you very much. Again, as you know, Cupertino Square is private property. It was formerly owned by Alan Wong, and he has recently sold the property to two separate entities. Whenever you, you build a mall or revitalize a mall, it takes time. One of the things that we asked for was that we wanted to see a movie theater in Cupertino. And I think one of the things that Mr. Wong was very successful was to bring the movie theaters into the mall. With the movie theaters, that is the economic engine to bring other retailers into the mall. Are we going to be a Valley Fair? No. Are we going to be a Stanford Shopping Mall? No. We're going to be our unique mall, that's going to be something very similar to Uprich Mall, a lifestyle center, where we're going to have good restaurants like California Piece of Kitchen and Islands, where we already have a Strike Cupertino. And we're going to get those retail national tenants into Cupertino, but we have to be patient. And I think that with a new property owner who is, can revitalize and bring money into the mall, I'm really excited. Now, the three properties have been sold to Evershank Group, and again, they have a success story in Marketplace. They brought in Elephant Bar, they brought in Wahoo Tacos, they brought in the Murly Line. So they also are very successful business people. So I'm really excited to see a revitalized Cupertino Square.
Thank you. Raj Abhiyanker.
Yeah, so Valco, I don't think anyone, or most people, disagrees, is a disaster. But we have an opportunity there, and it's nice that we have a movie theater, it's nice that we have a bowling alley, but everything else is, is completely dilapidated, or it's completely vacant. It's not helping our tax base much. Most of the businesses, such as the movie theater and the Strike Bowling Alley, don't bring in a lot of sales tax revenue to our city. I would love to see what we can completely rebuild. When I ran last time, I thought it would be best to raise it. Now, it's private property. We can't directly do anything on the, on the property. What we can do, though, is we can encourage businesses that we think would benefit our city to move here, and then connect them to the developers, and work with the right bookstores, Borders, Barnes &amp; Noble, Starbucks, other types of places, and tell them why Cupertino is a great place to have your business. And then connect them to those developers that own that, that, that space, and particularly the new ones. And if we do that, we can be more proactive than looking back and saying, it's not the city's problem, it's private property. We have to be proactive in getting the businesses we want.
Thank you. Barry Chang.
Valco, if you know the retail business, Valco was designed wrong. In Northern California, if you want a retail successful, has to be outdoor mall, but Valco is an indoor mall. So they have this, the design functional problem to, to overcome, and will be really difficult for them to overcome it, okay? Unless you know it, they all can, everybody can talk, they don't know what they're talking about. I'm in the business, I know what's going on. Unless, the only way we can help them, you cannot say, well, like Raj just say, just demolish the whole thing. City doesn't have that power. That's private property. You cannot do that. Okay? If the owner doesn't want to do it, nothing we can do about. Yes. But something we can do about is on HP property, and lucky enough, thanks for the voter, you voted down on a major E, so not allowing Tobler to build those condo. Otherwise, the whole, the whole, the whole downtown idea is, is evaporate. So we have to help the HP property to the high standard, to make sure that the retail business will be outdoor shopping center, and it will help, will be supplement to Valco, like, like, like a Valley Fair and Santana Row. Valley Fair is indoor shopping mall, but Santana Row is outdoor, so they, they help each other. So the business has to support each other. The, the idea, unless you know the idea, then you approve the project to, to, to support the idea. And then if you don't, then you approve the project, like what we did here. I mean, it totally screw up, in my opinion, excuse my language, okay? Totally screw up. So what can you do? Nothing you can do about. Thanks.
Thank you. Albert Chu.
I think Valco is like, suffer from like, like, basically like, like, like a jail or just like a closed, closed-in box. Like, people doesn't really know what's, what's in there, you know? You can't see anything from outside. You know, I, why, I don't know why they didn't put in more glass and, and just open up, you know, let people see what's inside, what have they got to offer. You know, that, that's, that's the only way that people are attracted to that. You know, being, being an outdoor mall, it's, it's partly a great idea, you know, but what, what can you do at this, at this stage? You know, you got to work with what you have. Like I said, maybe, maybe a little bit more, more glass, more, 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 more lights, more, so, more, more signs, it will do it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mark Santoro.
Madam Moderator, would you mind rereading the question?
Yes, I can do that. All right. So, "What is happening with the Cupertino Square renovation? It is sparsely populated by retailers, and we've been waiting patiently for 10 years to see the mall return to its former vitality."
The answer is, I have no idea what's happening, and I think nobody else does either. I think it, it, it needs help, and I think that it's kind of haphazardly going forward, and it could use some, some help and guidance.
Thank you. Chris Wang.
Okay. When Valco first built in '70, it was pretty successful as a mall in the region. However, there's issues with the ownership. I don't know how many people know that it used to own by the Teacher Reserve Foundation or something, which is not the, a businessman or is not the, the retail owner. So, and in the last 20 years, it really didn't do very well. And finally, five, six years ago, we got this single owner coming in and bought this mall, and they tried very hard. And I have the defense for them. Other than building houses, I don't support that. But, you know, building the business, the retailers, I, I see them working hard. They, everything, you know, needs money. They put a lot of money, all this, the, the theaters took a long time for them, and it cost was triple than what they originally estimated. And all the TI costs, the tenant improvement to the big anchors, Macy's, Sears, and, and Jay-Z Penny's, that cost a lot of millions of dollars. And they still, they put a lot of plan out there, they're planning to build more, the, the retail, more, more retail, they have food courts coming in, they have some other new restaurant coming. However, as we heard, they just changed owner again, so maybe the plan will change a little bit, but we'll, we'll work with them. You know, we want them to bring more retails come in to the, the mall, the center.
Thank you. All right. At this point, we're coming into the closing statements. The good news is, we got through a lot of questions, we heard about a lot of issues. The bad news is, you guys had a lot more questions. So I would encourage you to try to stay afterwards, and candidates, if you don't mind staying afterwards as well, to be available to answer the questions that we were not able to ask. So, we will start with closing statements, and they are two minutes each, and I'm going to go in reverse order. So Gilbert Wong, you are first.
First, I want to say thank you very much to the League of Women Voters for inviting all six candidates, and this is a good public service for us. This morning, I had an opportunity to sit down with Congressman Mike Honda, and I'm proud to announce today that he is endorsing my candidacy for Cupertino City Council. Things that I will bring to the City Council is that I will be a good listener to the community. Second, I have the passion to serve our community. And lastly, I have, I would like to be a good public policymaker. The vision I have for Cupertino is to have a balanced and managed growth. We should not build at the expense of our neighborhood, and also not to build at the expense of our open space and hillsides. Second, we need a strong economic development for City of Cupertino. Being on the Cupertino Planning Commission, I understand economics, and we need to bring more sales tax dollars to Cupertino to provide more infrastructure and more neighborhood services for our city. Third, we need to protect our open space and our hillside. I want to collaborate together with the Sierra Club and the League Conservation Voters and reduce our carbon imprint, and also work with Santa Clara Valley Water District to, to see how we can conserve water, and also not to build homes at the, at the expense of our city. Lastly, I want to maintain our quality of life. Our quality of life is very important. Why do people move to Cupertino? They move to Cupertino because it's a nice place to live, also because we have good businesses like Apple Computer and HP, as well as Dry Clean Pro and Pebbles. Also, we need to invest in our future. And investing in our future means investing in our children. We need to collaborate with our school district, our elementary, high school, and community college. But lastly, please visit my website at gilbertwong.org. Based on my experience, my leadership, and my commitment, I wish for you to vote for me on November 6. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Wang.
All right. Thank you. Over the past four years, I have had the great privilege to serve as a member of Cupertino City Council. During my term, I have again a deep understanding of our city's potential and strengths. I have the opportunity to work with community leaders, senior citizens, and students. And I have also worked hard to become a well-known advocate of residents' issues. I care deeply about residents' concern, and my experience has allowed me to make difficult decisions comfortably. But most importantly, I have seen a strong city grow stronger. I have been a proud member of the Cupertino community for over 20 years. Nothing brings me more joy than helping the community that I consider my family. During the next four years, I plan on seeking a traffic calming solution, continue to support low-income housing such as Cleo Avenue Project. And I wanted to help citizens, senior citizens, maintaining the public safety. And when I raising two sons in Cupertino, that has made, might appreciate all the great resource the city has to offer to families with children. So in my next term, I would like to continue enhancing the experience of our library, open seven days, maintaining the high-quality education, and creating natural retreats, all in all, plus the business, I would like to be the business advocate. Thank you very much for being here and listening, and I hope to see you all come out to vote on November 6. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Santoro.
First, I too would like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for people to come and hear what the candidates think. I'd like, I'd like to say I'm, I'm a little bit disappointed in the community. I would have liked to have seen a bigger turnout at this. Those of you that are watching on TV, at least that's good, but, you know, freedom and liberty cost. Everyone in the community needs to be involved in their elections. If you don't take the time to learn what the candidates stand for and vote, then you have no right to complain later. So I, I encourage everyone to learn about the candidates and vote. I think there's some, some wonderful people up here. Whether or not you vote for me doesn't matter. What matters is that you learn about the candidates up here and vote for some good people. So I, I really want to thank the people who did show up and are here educating yourselves and learning, and I want to encourage the rest of the city to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Albert Chu.
I appreciate the invitation. What I, what I like to stand for in my, my, my whole campaign and vision is like, I, I want to protect the kids, the, the schools. I think I've seen too, too much on the news that's, that's really affected me, so I do, I'll do whatever it takes. I, I'm, I'm one of those guy that, that if I, if I give you my word, I'll, I'll, I'll close the issue. I, I always deliver on my commitment. One thing I do, I do like is, you know, being, being face-to-face with people and how, what, what, you know, I like to, I need to listen to what, what they, what their issues are. So there's, there's, I need to understand where, where everybody's coming from. So if you come at me with something sincere, honesty, I will, I will, I will, I'll return the favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Barry Chang.
Again, thank you for attending or watching this forum. This election is very important. You will decide who will be elected, and which direction our city will go next four years. There are major differences between me and the other candidates. If you agree with me that our City Council should listen to the voice of the people, please elect me. Then the city leader will listen to what you have to say. If you agree with me that we should not build more condos until we have solutions for our schools overcrowded conditions, as well as solution for traffic congestion in our neighborhood, please vote for me to change the current direction led by our planning commission and City Council. Andrew Carnegie, a famous American entrepreneur, once said, "As I grow older, I pay less attention to what men say. I just watch what they do." If you agree with me, would Andrew Carnegie's action proven, action speak louder for, than the words, please vote for me, because I have a proven record of accomplishment while I was on Cupertino School Board. When I elected, when I, when elected, I would do expand library hours, reduce traffic around our school, reduce fee for our seniors, and I will, I will also recruit more business headquarters, revitalize our retail business, protect our quality of life and clean environment. I also will protect our scarce commercial zone lands and provide more service to our seniors. I'll be honored to serve you again, but I need your help. People often ask me, what's your chance to win? My answer is, if you all vote for me, I will have 100% chance. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Raj Abhiyanker.
Yeah, so I, I think everybody here is very good to serve our city. Why should you vote for me? Why should you care? Because quite frankly, you should question, why am I running? It was a very difficult race last time. Many of you supported me, many of you didn't like some of the things I said. I have taken the time to reach out and listen. I have taken the time to build a better Cupertino for our future by taking that first step. I sent a survey out to 15,000 of you. I'm proud to have received over 300 responses back. I, I will listen to the things that are most important. What are the most important things for our city? It doesn't matter what's important to me personally, it's what's important to the residents of Cupertino, and I put that first. Quality of our air, the expansion of Hanson, we have to deal with traffic congestion around our schools. We have to make sure that we create a diverse and inclusive culture and bring Americans together. I have the, the skills, and I have the leadership, and I have the insight to bring people together. I'm an American first, I'm a child of immigrants, I can do that. I am an attorney, I understand these issues that the City Council faces in more depth than anybody that has not received that formal training in law. And I can bring the new insight of voice of residents first to our council. And so I ask that those who voted for me last time, and new people who may not have agreed with me last time, to give me another chance, because I will, I will uphold the high honor that you would bestow on me if I were elected. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now, I want to encourage you again to stay after and ask the candidates your questions. They have their literature out on the tables out front, so please take a moment and look at those. You'll have information at the website, Cupertino.org, as well as SmartVoter.org. So there's lots of ways to get information, and I encourage you to take advantage of that. This concludes our Candidates Forum for this evening. On behalf of the League, I'd like to extend a special thanks to the candidates for cooperating this.